Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commission Regular Agenda of January 21st. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We're gonna start, see, there she is. We're gonna start our meeting as we always do with silent prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any public comments, Bridgette? Are you able to see anyone that may be on for public comments?
Do not see public comments at this time.
Thank you very much.
Can we note at this time that we received this email from Monique Mason-Halter about the 5G concerns that she has expressed? I sent that to each one of you before the meeting, so you can look at it when you get a chance.
Thank you very much.
If that's for the record, if that's okay.
Okay, for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to comments and motions. Vice President Reese, do you have any comments or motions?
Madam President, I don't have any motions. Do have comments, I just want to commend the MLK Coalition of this past week for MLK Day, having motorcades, so many people in their cars. Actually, it's a good idea, I think we should continue the motorcade, more people can participate in a safe way. I just want to acknowledge that and acknowledge them. Also, Quinton Monroe is on board as my new chief of staff, and so people can contact our office and ask for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse, any motions or comments?
Thank you, just a couple of comments. One related to yesterday, which was a brilliant day from all accounts. It just was very inspiring. The speeches talked a lot about unity and people coming together, all people coming together. And I was just very inspired by it, and I hope it kind of informs the work that everyone does in public office as we move forward for the good of our constituencies. So I was just really uplifted by the day, and I was telling someone earlier, I just have been smiling all morning, it's like, it feels like it's a new day. So I was very excited to witness what is historic in many ways, including the Vice President being a woman and a woman of color, Kamala Harris, and so it was just very exciting to watch. So that was my positive comment. I have one other comment that's not so positive, and that is that I don't think this had taken place last week when we had our meeting, but we're in purple now, and I can't remember if we mentioned it or not, but regardless, Hamilton County is purple on the governor's map for COVID-19. That is, oh yes, you did mention it, Madam President, I apologize. But, so I just want to remind people that we are likely to stay in purple today for one more week. We are starting to trend down after the spike we saw after the holidays, but it is unfortunate that for the first time, we have become purple on the state's map. That said, we are still getting limited doses of vaccine, as you know, but are now going to partner with the Board of Elections and Public Health to have that facility that was the early vote facility serve now as a vaccination site. As we all know, it's centrally located, people are familiar with it, there are bus routes that run by it, and so it's a great partnership between the BOE and Public Health and the Board of County Commissioners. So I did want to highlight that because I believe as of today and then ongoing, that will be the central site where the vaccinations from Public Health will be administered. So just an update on that, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments about yesterday. And so we had an entire group of people that were elated and just happy and hopeful and couldn't stop smiling, as Commissioner Drehouse was saying, and certainly a great day in America, but I'm also very conscientious about those who are not thinking that it's a great day. We want hope and unity, but a vast, a lot of people that are on, I'd say, the other side of the aisle, or wherever they may be, are grieving. They have lost some things. They have lost what they think or thought was good for them. And so I am really in prayer for those who feel like they will not be included. We just have a higher call to make sure that those who feel like they are not part of this administration or a part of this change, that they know that they are included. And I think that's, of course, what President Biden was speaking to, but I want, especially in the county, everyone is included, no matter what your party is. And so that feeling of not being included, we know about that, our culture knows about that. People, however, in their lives have experienced not being included and not feeling important. So I think our goal, not only as county commissioners, but as the United States administration and governmental entities, we need to make sure that people feel that their voice counts. So I just wanted to say those few words. Okay, we'll move on to Jeff Aludo, our county administrator. He can give his reports, and he has a few by leaves also.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, no comments for the record today, but we do have, I do have four by leaves. These relate specifically to labor agreements. So there's four resolutions approving tentative collective bargaining agreements. I can go through these one by one if you'd like, or I can walk through them all and have you approve of them en masse, however you would choose to go, Madam President.
I would suggest walk through them all, then we can make one motion. Thank you. Okay, is that okay with my colleagues?
Goodbye me.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
So by leave, item number one is the resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Board and the IUOE, the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 20. This is specifically representing maintenance repair workers and groundskeepers in county facilities. By leave number two is the resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Board and the County Engineers Office and the Teamsters Local Union Number 100. By leave number three is the resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Board and IUOE Local 20, specifically representing the trades employees at Paul Brown Stadium. And by leave number four is a resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Board and AFSMI Ohio Council 8 Local 1093, and this is representing the equipment operators, mechanic, and administrative assistant in the Field Operations Division of the Planning and Development Department. These have been discussed with the Board. The administration recommends approval of all four tentative agreements.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll open it up for any of my colleagues that may have a comment or a question as relates to these collective bargaining agreements. Vice President Reese?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No, I'm comfortable with all of these by leave items.
Okay, thank you. And as you said earlier, Jeff, you have discussed all four of these with us. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one through four as it pertains to collective bargaining agreements.
You're muted.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese, you're muted.
Uh-oh. Oh, she's frozen.
Uh-oh. Sorry.
I'm sorry, having some Zoom problems.
Your vote is yes?
Oh, our goodness, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you, Madam President, no additional comments or by leaves.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so we have one regular agenda item and several consent items. I will move to, I saw Eric Beck earlier, to address this first regular agenda item.
Yes, thank you. This is an extension of an agreement with Dale High Township. We have a shared use agreement, cooperative agreement with them. We share maintenance facility and salt dome on property owned by Dale High Township. This extends that agreement for another five years for where we share the maintenance and expenses for that operation.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from any of the Commissioners? Vice President Reese?
No, I don't have any additional comments.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
No comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Eric, for all that you do.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution Authorizing as Amendment and Restating of the Lease Agreement between Hamilton County and Dale High Township.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Summer Dumas, let's do it over.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Denise, you've already, Commissioner, you've already moved it. Sorry. Did you?
I did, I voted yes. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
The next one is, exclamation point on it.
We have, before us, we have consent agenda items, item two through 18, and I will open it for any questions or comments. Vice President Reese?
Thank you, President Dumas. This, one of these items, item number eight, deals with purchase order executions, and there, a lot of them were bid out and those kind of things. But there's item number five, purchase order 587302, which is a purchase order for $2 million, a little over $2 million actually, that is for the special fund land bank operation, special revenue fund, and it would be going to the Hamilton County Land Utilization Corporation to the Greater Cincinnati Port Authority. I know that all of us are on that committee, I've not had a chance to meet on the committee yet. I've asked, I just had my meeting before this, I ran a little bit down to the wire with Jeff Aludo about this item, and I wanted to know what the contract says, what we were locked into. So I would like to move for separation on this item and be able to confer the other items, but for me, be able to abstain from this item until I get a chance to see the contract and the understanding of the obligation.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you, Madam President. This item, and I, my understanding of it is that these delinquent tax funds are, and this happened a while back, actually, when we were in the legislature, these funds go to the land bank for some of the blight removal and development work that the land bank does through the Port Authority. So I am very supportive of these dollars moving so that we can get that work done as we have done in the past. So I don't mind, this is similar to the site readiness money, I don't mind holding it so that Commissioner Reese can get more information, but I do want to make sure that we don't lose track of these things, as these are community development dollars that are utilized and set aside for this purpose. So again, just want to caution that we need to just make sure we're bringing this stuff back so we can vote on it.
Madam President, can I give a clarification? My thought today is not to ask for it to be hailed, removed, and I want to be very clear, because we put a lot under community development, and it sounds so great, we want to commit, we want to develop in the community. But as I have traveled the county, throughout the county, and talked to so many people, people are concerned about losing their homes. Land banks come in, and they have, because of different powers that we have given them, they come in, and sometimes they've been bullied out of their homes. We've had genderfication, and I don't want to finance any genderfication. Now, maybe that's not what we're doing, but I need to see the contract of what the agreement is. You're absolutely right, at the state legislator, we did put the 5%, and that's how we pay for this, for those who are watching. We pay for it, 5% on your property taxes, delinquency. And the state did put a law that those, at 5%, must go to a land bank. But as I've researched other states, many have multiple land banks, and who is the land bank? That is, could be an RFP, could be other land bank. It doesn't say that it has to be the Port Authority as the land bank. And that's not to say I'm against the Port Authority being the land bank. And I've had this conversation with Laura in the presentation that was facilitated by Jeff, and I want to thank him for that. And she has indicated that, hey, you'll have your first meeting at the land bank, and you'll be able to hear and see what we're doing. But I'll be honest with you, there are so many people, constituents that I know, and particularly now with COVID, where people are possibly losing their homes. And if you saw the Cincinnati Herald, the auditor published all this delinquency of taxes of people with their homes, it was thicker than the actual newspaper. So I just want to make sure that in this very tough time, that I'm not voting on something maybe unintentional, not seeing the contract. I haven't seen the contract, I don't know what the contract is, I don't know if we could do something more creative now with land banks, maybe there's someone else out there. There's other places around the country where they have African-American land banks that deal with African-American communities. I don't know what that is, but I'd like to have the opportunity to be on the land bank when we go to the Board to ask those questions and be able to look at it. Now, our job, obviously, is not at the land bank only, where we would be only, we are three out of, I think, nine people, but right now, we are three here that would determine the 5%. Before that 5% leaves us, I just want to make sure that I understand what the contract is, and if we've looked at everything, and if there's other things we could possibly look at. So I'm not here to hold it up, you all have had more time to probably be involved with the land bank and know, you know, some other things that make you more comfortable. But for me, I want to have the opportunity to, you know, vote the way I need to vote today on this particular item.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, as it relates to the other purchase orders that are included in that process, is there a timeline if we delayed item eight until our next meeting?
I'm looking at all of them.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Madam President? So maybe I misunderstood. So the separation, Commissioner Reese's, is not to delay so much as just to separate the vote for the rest of the items and then have a separate vote for the land, the DTAC money? Is that correct? Or, so it's, I misunderstood, Madam President, it's not a delay, it's separation of these two votes. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, so you would be, if I may, Madam President, and I refer to Michael and the clerk both on this, you would be, there would be a motion for separation of purchase order 587302 from by leave item number eight, which would then be considered separately as a separated item with the remainder of item number eight modified to exclude that purchase order that all three Commissioners can vote on.
Correct. Okay, well, and my question really was, should we just wait and then vote on the whole, the whole set of purchase orders? But we can do, we can separate. Separation is not really something that I'd like to do, I'd like to, even though it may be a different vote. Okay, so I'm going to...
Madam President, if I could, just to answer your question, because I didn't directly answer your question, I would say for setting up a purchase orders, especially since we are getting, you know, it's early in the year, but it's getting late in January, and we do have some vendors that typically get paid on a monthly basis, et cetera. So delaying these could technically be, I haven't looked into each and every one of them, but could be complicated, could complicate certain vendors.
Okay, thank you. So what I'll do now is make a motion to remove 587.302 from item eight.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll put it back on our, on our agenda for our next regular agenda item until we get further, until we get further information, or Commissioner Reese gets further information. But we'll move forward with our other consent items.
Madam President, just again, for clarification's sake, I thought we were going to move all of the items, separate out the one we just did, but still vote today so that these other purchase orders can move forward?
That's what I'm getting ready to do.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's what I'm getting ready to do. Thank you. But thanks for, we need to clarify, because different comments have come up. So my next statement was going to be to make a motion to adopt the consent items two through eight. Of course, we've moved out, made a motion to move that one out, but why don't we, two through 18, why don't we do that? Make a motion to adopt items two through 18?
With eight as amended.
With eight as amended.
Sir, second? Commissioner, Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yeah.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanted to make a comment, because Commissioner Drehouse has said that we have to make sure that we keep up with the ones we have delayed or the ones that we are waiting for additional information. Because as we talk about delay or exclusion or inclusion, we are also talking about different businesses and agencies that are waiting to hear what, how, which way the Commission is going to go. And certainly, as I said before, we want everybody to get all the information that they can, but we don't want to delay it too far out, because we will possibly lose track of where we're going and where they're going as it relates to their mission.
And Madam President, if I could, I don't want to speak for any one Commissioner here, but I thought what I heard Commissioner Reese say, so I just want to make sure that the Board knows it's an option for advancing on this, was that I did not think I heard Commissioner Reese indicate that she was in opposition to this item being considered today and potentially passed by a majority of the Board. I thought it was her stating her position of her not being ready to vote on that particular item, but if the majority of the Board chose to move ahead, that they could. Commissioner Reese, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so...
That is accurate, so I'm, I guess, now, I just couldn't vote on it as a consent item. It needed to vote on individually, so I'm ready and ready to go to vote today.
Okay. And I would like to, my understanding is to get more, to allow you to get more information. You're ready to vote today? Do you have all the information you need to vote today?
Yeah, I mean, if we are, I don't want to look as though I'm holding it up. My position is there's a contract that was already signed, I haven't seen it. I'd like to know what it says. So, you know, I know that, you know, you all passed the budget before I got here. And now I'm just kind of, it's kind of weird, because other entities that I've been at, other elected, when they pass a budget, they pass the money to go with the budget. So I'm in a position, it's not like, I just want to make sure people watching, I'm not holding things up. I'm in my third week, and there was a budget passed before I got here, but now I'm asked to pass the money, and then every time I'm asked to pass the money, it's like, well, we got to hurry up. Well, you know, I know I talked to Commissioner, former Commissioner David Pepper when he was elected, and they actually held the budget up so that he could, you know, that way, the, he has input on the budget, and then it's easier for the money to be passed. But I understand that was you all's prerogative, but for me, every vote I take, all of us are accountable for. And I asked Jeff Aludo about the contract, which has been signed, but I haven't had a chance to see it, because I just found out about it today. But I am not here to hold it up, we can move forward with this vote, and that's why I wanted it separated, and we can move on so that we can continue the business to keep them before, it's not my goal to hold up the business of the Commission.
Okay. And I understand what you're saying about moving forward, and you said you wanted to see the contract, and I want you to see the contract. And I'm not sure who's, you know, saying for you to hurry up, that's not my philosophy. We can certainly vote on it today. Commissioner Drehouse, are you prepared to vote on it regardless of her ability to see the agreement? That we can go with it, because it has been discussed before. But I definitely want to make sure it doesn't look as if we're trying to push or rush you or anybody else to make a decision at the point that we're able to delay it without any complications for you to get all your information, that's the way I would go. But I can go either way, Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you, Madam President, for that.
Commissioner Drehouse, are you prepared to vote on it today?
I am.
Okay. Okay. Well, why don't we move forward? And Jackie, you can help me with this, but I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number eight, not 587.302.
That PO?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Sir, second?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Same.
You want, you saying no? Abstention, or yes?
Abstention.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It passes with one abstention. We have nothing else on our agenda. Are there any comments, additional comments that my colleagues would like to make before we make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I do want to also echo what happened yesterday. Obviously, I got my pearls on, I saw you, President Dumas, had your pearls on too yesterday, and there's so many young girls that got a chance to see Kamala Harris, our Vice President, put up the right hand, and so many little girls around our county and the country put up their right hand too, to see that type of imagery at that level at the White House yesterday. And I just thought it was a positive, a positive thing. I certainly thought the comments and the speech by our President, now Joe Biden, talking about a new day, a day of fresh air, but also responsibility on each of us to come together as we fight the COVID, which is tough, it's hitting everybody, doesn't care what political party, or who you are, who you think you are, what your bank account is, COVID is hitting everybody equally. And I really appreciate him saying that it's going to take all of us to roll up our sleeves and to move forward. So I'm excited and looking forward to us working with this new administration to bring more dollars back to Hamilton County, because that's obviously our concern, so that we can get these things on the street and get help directly to help people. So I'm looking forward to it, and I thought yesterday was great, and there's some great people that will be going in, hopefully as Secretaries that many of us have worked with or know from the past, and hopefully be able to use those contacts to bring money back to Hamilton County. So I'm looking forward to, with our economic, COVID Economic Recovery Task Force, to be right on point, right in there with this new administration to help us bring some help and some relief back to the folks here in Hamilton County.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No further comments.
Okay. I would just like to comment, I forgot to mention that we are looking at the possibility of having evening meetings. Of course, it would be virtual, I'll be contacting each office. We were saying we wanted to get, I think we need to go in and get it started, even if it is virtual. It would still be the third Thursday at 6:00, like we did before, and I'll be sending out to, as I said, to each office, the times and dates. And I, and there are people that are working, some that are, you know, they're still been able to keep their jobs, and they're interested in what we're doing. So I want to get that started in February, so you'll be hearing more about it from my office. Okay.
Can I respond to that? Okay, I apologize. So we stopped doing that last year, and so there was a list of communities that, where we didn't go, because we were doing virtual. So if you don't mind, Madam President, I would love to share that list of those that were in the queue, but we didn't get out there. but we didn't get out there, because they were, as you say, very welcoming and very excited about having us, having us come out, and we never did quite make it. So if you don't mind, I'm going to have my chief of staff reach out to your chief of staff just so that the names of those communities can be provided to you just for reference sake.
Okay. And thank you for bringing that up, because along with the dates will be that list. We already have that list. We've already reached out, and so, but thank you. We definitely want to keep the ones that were interested. So you reminded me to say that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.